Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Don't have any just that's coming up.
You had some there.
What?
You did have some, but they've gone away. Or. I have that effect on people.
They're muted. They haven't said anything.
But there's nobody coming up?
Yeah, they're not talking.
Okay.
Everyone give her socks.
Screen is audio action. So everyone starts talking, which is the other part.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that. This is Sarah Melish, Chair of the Manchester zoning Board of Appeals. I will call the meeting to order at seven oh three P M. On April nineteenth, twenty twenty three. I have with me in the room from the board, Brian Solis, Jim Dietrich, James Mitchell, and myself. We were hoping to have another member join via phone, but I don't believe. Catherine, are you on? Yeah, okay. So tonight we have four people. All two in the room is Mark Glofski and Jay.
Blackwoods.
Lot name. Um, because we only have four members, it will need to be a unanimous vote tonight. So we'll see what happens as the meeting goes on. Um, so would somebody like to present this application?
I'd be happy to. My name is Mark Glofski. I'm a lawyer with offices at Eighth Washington Street in Beverly. I'm here tonight representing James and Grace Hoffman, the owners of the property.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I didn't open the public hearing yet.
Okay, I can say that all over again.
Yes, having a tough night. Um, I will open the public hearing for the application of James and Grace Hoffman for a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and or other relief as may be necessary to raise a single family residence on a nonconforming lot and construct a new single family residence and garage which conforms with all setback and coverage requirements at seventeen Eaglehead Road, Assessors Map number thirteen, lot number forty two in District E, filed with the town clerk on March thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Um, now I'll recognize Mr. Glofski.
Okay, I am Mark Glofski here tonight representing Chim and Grace Hoffman, who are in California. They are the owners of the property at seventeen Eaglehead Road. Also with us tonight via Zoom, I suspect are Tom Murdo and Michelle Shaheen. Uh, they are the architects for the project from Murdo Design in Concord, Massachusetts. Also with us tonight, I believe, are Todd Richardson and or Micah Franzman, who are the landscape architects from Richardson and Associates in Sacco, Maine. And as you know, Jay Polakowitz is here with me. He's the project engineer from Hancock Associates. Uh, we applied for the relief uh that we're requesting pursuant to the old section six point one point two. Uh, but when I went online today to prepare for tonight's meeting, I discovered that the new zoning ordinance has been posted on the town's website and it's renumbered sections. So the old section six point one point two is now the new section seven point two. However, the language of the sections is unchanged. Uh, we're still here asking for a permit to raise and reconstruct a single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot. Uh, and the test is is relatively simple in a situation like this. Uh, if what we're proposing increases the nonconforming nature of the property, then the the responsibility of this board is to determine whether what we're proposing would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming situation. And uh before we get into the specifics of the project, uh, I would just tell you that the Hoffmans acquired the property in September of twenty twenty two. Uh, since then, they've been working uh hard to uh design a project that's appropriate for the site. Uh, they've been in in conversation with neighbors. They've had a good team of professionals supporting the project. And uh as you can see from what's been filed, uh, it's uh in my estimation, a very attractive project. We are in zoning District E. The nonconformities are not just lot size, which is the fact that we're a seventy three thousand plus square foot lot versus the ninety thousand square feet required. Additionally, we we have no frontage. Uh, the lot is accessed by a private way. The lot was approved in the nineteen fifties by the planning board. Uh, and it is nonconforming. It's a situation where customerly a hundred and fifty feet of frontage would have been required. Uh, there's another existing nonconformity, and that has to do with the existing house, which is located thirteen feet approximately from the westerly boundary line uh when twenty feet would have been required. The new project, as we stated earlier, is going to comply in all respects with the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. And we will eliminate that side yard setback problem. Uh, the property is currently improved with a nineteen fifties house that wasn't constructed to withstand withstand coastal conditions. Uh, you saw those of you who attended the site visit saw that it's in a fairly dilapidated condition. And uh, I think it's it's life is uh been well lived. At this point, I think what would be appropriate would be for Tom Murdo or Michelle Shaheen to explain in uh brief terms of the nature of the project, what they're proposing to build on the site.
Mr. Murdo or Mr. Shaheen?
Hello, I'm Tom Murdo. Uh, I'm uh one of the architects working on the project. This is Michelle. Um, so basically what we're proposing is to um make a more a a fully conforming building. Uh, so the building is uh the the existing structure is nonconforming on a setback on the west side. Uh, we pulled the new building serves the west yard setback. Uh, the building in its entirety is conforming with all the setbacks. Um, the building itself is a is composed of three sort of vernacular volumes, basically gabled structures. Um, and will be um, so it's a two of those structures are uh composed the the primary living space, the residence, and then the third um gabled volume is a garage with a guest suite on the second floor. Um, we pulled additionally, we pulled the um building back from the coast. Um, and while that does not really affect the zoning setbacks, we do think that that's responsible in terms of um just, uh, you know, being observant of uh that the coastline. So um the building is a you know, it's a it's we have a footprint of four thousand ninety uh square feet. Um, and um I don't have the existing footprint, but it's the existing footprint is a little is is smaller than that, but um uh, we feel that this is a, you know, a a responsible and sort of um uh contextual solution that fits the site.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, in in the course of uh preparing for tonight's meeting, uh, the Hoffmans uh did a fair amount of uh neighborhood outreach. Uh, they wanted to be as transparent as they could be. Uh, from the very beginning, we've been sharing uh plans and information with neighbors uh in response to concerns that the Hoffmans uh heard. They have uh modified the plan slightly since the original filing by eliminating basement space that would likely have caused uh the need for blasting. And uh Jay can speak specifically about the changes that were made to reduce the basement area of the house and and what the consequences are likely to be.
Uh, so I'm just gonna hop over here to my client.
Could you just state your full name for the record?
Sorry, uh, Jay Blackbirds Hancock Associates.
Thank you.
Thank you. So over here is a the site plan that we have prepared for this. Uh, in pink is the property lines, green the setback lines. Orange is the existing house and blue is the proposed house. This portion of the existing house has a basement. Uh, while the remaining portion has a crawl space. Originally, we proposed to have a basement uh throughout the entire um proposed house that has been modified so that only this portion here has a basement. And that is in mind generally with where the existing basement is, meaning that there won't be significant amounts of excavation needed for the proposed. Uh, we talked to both the contractor who's doing the site work, and he says that blasting should have been needed for this amount of excavation. Thank you.
Um, although this is not a special permit use, there's always been some confusion with the zoning board, I think, because there are two kinds of special permits. There are uses uh that are identified in the zoning bylaw that specifically require a special permit from the zoning board or the planning board in order to conduct that use. And uh that is different from situations that are governed by chapter forty A, section six, which deals with nonconforming properties. As I said earlier, the standard in a situation like this is generally to to determine whether what's being proposed would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. However, this board has traditionally applied the criteria that's also used for special permit uses. And your application uh requests the applicant to respond to that list of criteria that were in the former section seven point five of the zoning bylaw. And that's now section twelve point five of the Manchester zoning bylaw. And I'm just gonna run through those that that criteria list very quickly. Uh, first item is whether the uh the site of the project uh is appropriate in terms of its size for the proposed use. And we are respectfully suggesting that the property's been improved and used without adverse effects for single family purposes since the nineteen fifties. And consequently, it seems to be perfectly adequate. Uh, the second, whether it's suitable again, uh, we're saying it's sufficiently sized and configured to enable us to relocate improvements in the property that will be consistent with the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. Uh, third item is whether there would be an impact on traffic flow and safety. And uh what we're suggesting is that it's going to be a single family house that will probably generate the same amount of traffic as the prior house. Uh, the rule used to be that the average uh four bedroom a single family house generated ten vehicle trips a day. I don't know whether that's changed, but yeah, in any case, it will be minimal uh when spread throughout the day. Uh, next item is whether the there will be impact on the neighborhood's visual character, including views and vistas. And uh we think that what Tom Murdo has designed is going to be more consistent with the character of the neighborhood than what's currently there. And we think it's perfectly appropriate uh for Eaglehead and for the town of Manchester. Next is the question of adequate sewage disposal and sources of water and drainage. Uh, as you know, there's going to be a new Title V compliant septic system installed uh to serve the new house. So to the extent that the old system was uh inadequate, the new system uh will be state of the art. Uh, with respect to drainage, uh Hancock Engineering has uh come up with a plan that uh assures that there won't be adverse effects from runoff. There's there's, as Jay can explain, need be. There there's gonna be a rain garden, there are drainage controls, and uh there shouldn't be any problems whatsoever. Uh, utilities are not gonna change. They're still there and they're adequate. Uh, last question is the effect on wildlife habitats and natural resources. Uh, that will actually be positive. Uh, as you have seen from the materials we submitted, uh Richardson and Associates is contemplating removal of a significant amount of invasive species from the site. And all those invasive species are gonna be replaced with uh natural uh with appropriate natural materials and uh it will certainly be an enhanced property uh when the project is completed. Consequently, uh we think it's it's clear that we satisfy the criteria that have uh historically been applied for special permits in an instance like this. However, as I mentioned, the test remains whether the proposal is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now. And with all due respect, I'd say that's not the case. And to uh support what I'm saying, uh, we have submitted to the board. Uh, I actually emailed it today because we got the last signature. Uh, but we submitted uh an assessors map that shows uh almost all of the butters having signed a petition in support of the project uh with the exception of Mrs. Colburn uh who's here tonight and who wanted to wait, I think, and here for herself and maybe ask questions. So she was satisfied that she wasn't going to be adversely affected by the project. But I certainly uh can't speak for her. Uh, so that's that's our presentation, and I respectfully reserve the right to reflect anything that we might hear.
Thank you. Um, James, do you have any questions?
I don't. This is all very clearly presented, and thank you for your descriptions.
Yeah.
The only thing I noticed is the new chimney will be actually over setback.
That's allowed.
That's allowed.
Yeah.
Um, and that was probably because he didn't have his choice in the matter. Um, you only have a lot narrows down there, but I just noticed that. Yes, um. Now, it wasn't clear to me when you were up at your back. The existing basement is under portion of the old house that can be on the left hand side is looking at that drawing. Um, because the two colors you mentioned, I couldn't see them from here.
Want me to pull the plug closer?
That would be helpful. It would be helpful if it had been included. Oh, I see the orange now.
That is the existing house. I showed the deck as well.
Right.
That was something we discussed yesterday. So this portion of the house, it's kind of the main part. Uh, this has the basement in it. Uh, the basement that we're proposing is generally in this area here.
Okay.
So the central portion of the house where the old basement will be.
All right. So you're gonna put up some foundation wall into the old basement hole.
Uh, yeah, basically, we're we're trying to keep it within the basement excavation.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay.
Uh, Brian, you have any questions?
No, I think we're welcome into and they're in. Focus.
Um, Mrs. Colburn, do you have some questions? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Francis Colburn, one eighty five Summer Street. I mean, okay, and certainly there's no doubt that the house is gonna be more attractive than what's there. Um, we have conservation Eastmans saying that we cannot add on to say our garage or the house or whatever. And the only thing that I find difficult about this is is jet not this particular. I mean, not what they're actually doing because it is very attractive and all that. But just the fact that you're allowed, they would be allowed or anybody is allowed in Manchester. Really, it's that to um add on when you're in the two hundred and fifty feet of the water and whatever that one is. I mean, it's just a more it it's it's more a general objection to it than it is a specific because it is definitely nice in what's there. And I'm just, that's my only.
Okay. Yeah, we thank you for that input. Uh, I think that with respect to coastal buffers, um, that is really under the purview of the conservation.
Okay, well, they don't show that, and they didn't seem to. Well, they're still gonna have a site visit.
Right.
To go on, but they didn't say we were. Okay.
The zoning board of appeals is concerned um with respect to the fact it's a nonconforming lot.
Right.
Um, but it already had a structure on it and also concerned with respect to the setbacks. And they're the zoning setbacks, and they are improving that because they're no longer in the side setback that they're the ones before. So.
And so going back doesn't matter to you. And so going back doesn't matter to you? Going, extending backwards.
Right, we're also.
Covering the driveway.
We're also concerned about coverage by structures and impervious surface.
Yeah.
And, um, under the applications submitted to us, um, it used to be, um, the, the structures used to be five point one three percent, and it's now ten percent, which is well below what's allowed in the, the bylaw. And the total coverage, um, by structures and impervious is, um, what is it, fifteen percent? Which is substantially lower than what's allowed. Um, and it appears as if that they're trying to retain as much pervious surface as they can.
If, if I may, I just might, I responded a little bit to what, uh, Mrs. Colburn.
Yes.
Suggested. Um, the buffer zone, as I understand it, is a hundred feet from the coastal bank, actually. Uh, but as Jay explained at the site visit, uh, the Hoffmann's are actually pulling the house back from the coastal bank and extending it further in the other direction. So to the extent that the house is currently within that hundred-foot area, it's going to be less intrusive after the project than before the project.
And do you mind if I add something as well?
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, so there's the coastal bank on the southern side of the site, uh, but on the northern side of the site, there's, uh, wetland, uh, both of which are resource areas. Um, about ninety percent of the sites within a resource area buffer zone, um, there's a very small portion outside of it. If we were to push the house back from the coastal bank, then we would be getting closer to the wetland. Again, both of which are resource areas, so.
It was not allowed.
There's not a lot of wiggle.
Yeah.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? If so, please speak up.
Uh, as, as the applicant, uh, uh, Jim Hoffman, I would just like to express my appreciation for everybody on the committee that, you know, takes the time to review these proposals and, uh, uh, tries to make Manchester by the sea, uh, endure as a, as a great place to live, and, and, and we certainly want to do everything in, in our power to, um, uphold kind of the quality of the, of the, of the structures built and, and respect, um, you know, the coastline and the wetlands and, and all of our neighbors uh, on Eaglehead. So, uh, thank you very much for, you know, considering our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anyone else? Any more questions?
I'm good. I'm good.
Um, because there's only four of us, I'll kind of take a straw sense of the board before I make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Um, with that, I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of James and Grace Hoffman for a special permit under Sections seven point two and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw to raise an existing single-family residence on a non-conforming lot and construct a new single-family residence and garage, which meet all setback, coverage, and maximum height requirements of the district at seventeen Eaglehead Road, Assessor's Map number thirteen, Lot number forty-two in District E, filed with the Town Clerk on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and the proposed replacement residence and garage will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it's located than the existing residential structure. And the requirements, conditions under Section twelve point five of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the condition that the structures constructed meet all setback, coverage, and height restrictions in District E and are situated in accordance with the following plans created by Hancock Associates dated March tenth, twenty twenty-three, C-two notes and legend sheet, C-four layout and materials, and a one point one-one site plan enlarged. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, seconds. Any discussion?
Second.
Brian, second.
Oh, that's what I said. You said you needed something else?
No, I'm just asking if there's any more discussion.
No, I think it's a beautiful design.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Approved.
And Sarah, vote yes. You're all set. And the only thing I would caution you is if the Conservation Commission makes you adjust the location of the structures, you would need to come back to us for a modification of the special permit.
Okay. So I just asked a question.
Sure.
About the blasting, if, which is really the thing that's making us nervous. Um, if, if they do decide there's blasting, they have to come back to you. No, no, so because our house.
There are strict rules with respect to blasting that would have to be complied with. Uh, the Hoffmann's are gonna do whatever they can to avoid blasting.
Yeah.
And that they've talked to, uh, land construction, I believe, and made a preliminary determination that based on the revised plans, there won't be a need for blasting. However, if there is blasting, uh, then there's an obligation to notify Butters, uh, to, uh, do, uh, video, uh.
A pre-site, a pre-blasting.
A, a pre-blast survey. Thank you.
Of our house, yes. Inside.
If you, if you, if you want it done.
And they would have to do it.
They would, they would do it.
And, and they also puts what seismographs on site? I just happen to have it done next to me.
So they have a warning, they have a warning system before the, the blast.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, it's very well regulated.
Because our house does move a little sometimes, so I'm assuming.
We are on a big fault, you know?
Yeah, exactly. So I'm assuming if there's blasting, that's gonna move a little more. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so you're all set? Um, decision will be written within, oh, that's the thing I forgot.
Hmm, yes.
I can write it. Who would like to read you it?
I would.
James, you are. What did you say, Brian?
Get marked on it.
Okay.
Some, some committees do that.
I know.
Okay, we're gonna move on to administrative matters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And hopefully everybody will get the right running ordinance.
Yeah. When do you think they're gonna start?
It's a fluid.
And, uh, so that everyone could start the, uh, yeah, I'm not too sure when the, the site date is, um.
Um, Mrs. Colburn, before they tear down the structure, they apply for a building permit. A demo permit, and the permits are online. Do they have it? They're not in the cricket, but you can go into the Manchester webpage.
Yeah.
And there's a section for perm, building permits, and you can click on it, you can search on the location. Which at least, but I would hope that the Hoffman, Hoffmann's.
I think they will.
Yeah.
We didn't know about the com, I only knew about.
You know what? The conservation, this meeting?
Yeah, and the conservation, but well, you sent it, but it was after it was in.
Uh, you should have received a certified, whatever, amendment.
We'll move on to.
Yes.
Minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Um, the ones from January twenty-fifth, which I, I sent some amendments out on Tuesday.
Right.
Um, people have a chance to look at that?
Looked, I, I didn't attend that, each.
Okay.
So I don't.
Brian?
I wasn't looking for a stalling or punctuation. The substance was fine.
Okay.
I didn't, I used the draft that is to write a decision, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Um, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-fifth? James, yes. Brian, seconds. Take a vote.
Yes.
Brian, James, Sarah, yes. Okay. Next is the meeting of March fifteenth. I looked at those and they looked fine to me. If other people have a chance.
I looked down, I looked and checked with this, like, in the strong.
They looked okay.
They looked okay.
I just saw them, sorry, it looked fine.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March fifteenth?
So.
Brian moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Um, roll call vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jim? James?
Yes.
And Sarah, vote yes. Um, so all of the decisions, um, from prior to the March fifteenth meeting have been filed. So we just have the ones from March. So that's good. And, um, anything else?
World's fastest meeting. But I set a record.
I know.
Yeah, I do have a question. You know, my term expires the end of June.
Yes.
Um, would you like me to remain as an alternate? Or do you have enough people lined up that it won't be necessary? And you don't have to tell me now. I'll simply say that if,
Okay.
if it's your wish or if you need it, I'm happy to do it because I'm familiar with the process and it's not an issue. Um, but we probably have to clear it with somebody in Town Hall.
Right, yeah. Um, so your term is up this year, and you're not staying?
Actually, yeah, I'm so overcommitted.
Okay, yeah. Um.
And Brian's leaving too, I think.
I was, well.
What?
Do you want us going out? Are we clear or?
No, not quite yet.
Okay.
We gotta.
Take a chart.
Okay.
I, I was gonna, I, I wanted to move back into an alternate position. I'll stay on, I mean, the, uh, you know.
So Sean would become
John.
A full member. And then we have an application from. Right.
But I know that James.
Right.
And then Catherine is indicating and decided that.
Well, she's still in her term, so we need to work.
John, John, the.
He's staying on.
Okay.
So you're covered.
Well, we might need you a second alternate until we can find somebody.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Yeah, and have the new application be a full-time member. So you can be an alternate. Okay. Um, should we adjourn the meeting?
This discussion sounds good, yes.
Yes.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, second. All in favor, yes.
Bye.
Okay, you can shut us down.
Next meeting, date.